Alright, thank you everyone and welcome to the Tuesday, May 21st, 2024 Board of Education Meeting. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to reconvene in open session.
Uh, second.
The problem moved in second. Any questions on the motion? Oh, it was the favorite state item. Alright. This meeting is now open. Roll call please, Mr. Trent.
Yes, Mr. Carlson.
Here.
Ms. Allen.
Here.
Ms. Beal.
Here.
Ms. Franco-Herman.
Present.
Ms. Harris. Ms. Luka German.
Here.
Ms. Peanut.
President.
Mr. Todd.
President.
Thank you. We have a call.
Thank you. Please rise with the slums of the flag. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with every liberty and justice for all. So I do not see our student rep, so we're gonna go right into our interview of our board candidates. So as I said earlier, uh, thank you all for applying to fill the vacancy of the Montgomery School Board, uh, position. Uh, I applaud your courageousness, as I said, um, you know, sometimes be careful what you wish for. So the way this will work, uh, each of you will be allotted three minutes to present your case to the, the board and the public, um, followed by, follow up by any questions, uh, that the board members may have, uh, based on your presentation or other submitted materials. Uh, we do have one person that has prior engagement, so we will allow her to go first. Other than that, we will go in alphabetical order. So up first, we have Ms. Samira Ghani. Podium right here.
So it does work. Alright, so my name is Samira Ghani. I am a Montgomery resident and I think that the reason I applied to for this position is because I feel that it would be wonderful to be able to work together and to be able to better, uh, to better the, for the students, to do better for the students and to be able to find common ground that we can all work on. I am a community leader. I did a lot of work with the community, so I do know a lot of things about, about our community and how to bring our community together and to work together to make Montgomery a more unified place. That's about all I have right now.
Thank you. Board members, any questions of Ms. Ghani?
Great, I'm done.
Alright, thank you. Up next, Ms. Aisha Amad.
Hello, okay. Good evening, everyone. Hello, my name is Aisha Amad. Thank you so much for considering my application for the open position on the board. As a parent with a son currently enrolled in the school district, he's in third grade and a relatively new resident to Montgomery, about two and a half years. Um, I, the reason that I applied for this position is because I have a passion for education and with the son in the school, I'm invested in the success of the schools. Um, I have a variety of, um, professional experiences which I think would be, um, supportive in delivering for the board, for these initiatives that the board has for this year. Um, I've worked in the pharmaceutical industry, uh, working in strategy operations and vendor oversight. I've established governance, overseen staffing partners, including discussions about recruitment and retention, uh, which I know came up in the strategic plan for the teachers for the school. Um, I've worked in higher education and nonprofit roles where I support faculty and students at Ivy League universities, supporting them in, um, what their future career paths might look like. Um, I also actively volunteer my time guiding students through the application process for undergraduate and graduate programs, um, and have worked in math classrooms, supporting students in high schools, um, as an undergraduate student. So I really have a passion for education and for helping students to achieve their goals. Um, I've also worked in diversity and inclusion within a professional environment, facilitating three roundtable sessions with the CEO of our pharmaceutical company, focusing on the experiences of Asian employees, uh, bringing that to what I would like to do for our school district. Um, I recognize that students face pressure to achieve and anxiety about what their future might look like and helping them to, um, deal with that mental health and that stress and to tell their story about what they want to do is something that I would like to focus on if I am given that opportunity, given the short tenure of this role. Um, additionally, I believe in the importance of technology in classrooms, given the importance of evolving education, the availability of AI and other tools to enable student success. And last, as a board member, I would continue advocating for diversity, equity, and inclusion in our schools. Um, I'm committed to our students and, um, hope to foster an environment where all students can thrive and to elevate the quality of education in our school district. Thank you for your question, uh, thank you for consideration if you have any questions.
Board members, any questions? Board members, Peanut.
You mentioned the short tenure of this role and your desire to, uh, focus on the anxiety and achievement. The short tenure of this role is, is only a few months. Are you considering potentially putting in a petition for running in November?
I think that would depend on the experience that I had on the board and what I think I can contribute.
Fair enough.
Any other questions from the board members? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mrs. Zabir Kadavich.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Zabir Kadavich, uh, and in 1990, uh, after our first son was born, my husband and I located into Montgomery and since that time, we've been Montgomery residents. That's probably a long time. And we've raised, um, five kids in this community with our youngest graduating from Montgomery High School in this upcoming June. So that's our youngest. Um, I started my career as a computer, um, and electrical engineer, working at IBM in, at Frostville Village and Dayton back when they were there. And then when my child, my oldest son, turned, was turning three, I decided to kind of do something a little bit off track and I helped open a private school in, in Monmouth Junction. We started an elementary school and we served students at, the first year, we, um, served students from pre-K to first grade. We had 27 students and year by year, we grew that school until what it is today, which is, um, a school from pre-K to 12th grade, serving 600 students with a waiting list. Um, so those, those were my first 25 years in education. Um, I taught for those 25 years. I also was an administrator at all different levels within that school. I was a teacher coach. I was a department head and I was even a vice principal. I transitioned out of that school and worked at another pre-K through 12th private school for four years. I worked as a vice principal for the first year and then principal for the three years thereafter. Um, I also, some of the things that I got in my private, uh, private school career is I had the honor, I, I love kids, so I had the honor of being able to teach every grade from KG through 12th grade, so I had that opportunity. I also, working in, um, a private school setting, I got to know the in and the outs of all school, everything, uh, from the janitor job to the principal job. Because when you work in private school, you kind of have to know, if you're running, trying to run a private school, you have to pretty much do everything and learn about everything. Um, I also, uh, I transitioned just recently, within the last couple of years, into, um, independent educational consulting. Um, this gives me flexibility and also the opportunity to take care of my extended family, which what happens is you have five children. Um, and so that's what I'm doing. Um, it also opened the opportunity for me to pursue my masters in educational leadership at Harvard University, which is what I'm pursuing right now. And I have completed one year and I, I'm due to graduate.
Yeah, thirty seconds left.
Thirty seconds, I'm gonna try my best. Um, I'm a person who's, um, through those years, I have coached, I have volunteered. Uh, in 2021, I received the New Jersey State Governor's Jefferson Award in Education. And, um, my, what I'm studying right now kind of prompted me to go forward. I've been in the private sector, in the private education sector and I'd like to do, contribute also to public schools if I'm able to and that's why I chose to try to run for this position. So I appreciate your time and I appreciate you listening to me and as teachers, we could just go on and on and on. So thank you for listening to me.
Questions from board members?
I have a question.
Any questions?
So, um, you mentioned that you started at school and then you grew, you grew that school from really nothing to a well-functioning K to 12 organization.
Yes.
How did you do that? How did you gain trust of that community to trust, you know, to, to bring their children under your care? And you were so successful with funding, so many positions, with staffing. I would like to understand like how you were able to accomplish.
Sure. You said the key word, which is trust. Um, it's, it, um, it, we showed them that we were doing the best that we could for their children. Um, I was, I, I, I literally, I still keep contact with those students who are now married and have children. Um, you know, and so we showed them and we were succeeding. I remember the, the first, in the first year when we were actually opening, I remember a person who's now my friend, who's over 25 years, and she said, "Well, what am I gonna do when you close up like next year?" And I was like, "Excuse me? What do you mean, close up next year?" Um, and we really, um, we were committed. We were a group of committed people and this, this private school was not a money school. It was a hard work school. So it's kind of, kind of the, um, the equivalent of what you think of like a Catholic school or any other type of religious school. So we were able to gain the trust of families because we actually had success. Um, and one of the nice things is when we had our first graduation, our, our, our first graduating class was only four students, but we had like almost 300 people in the audience for those kids, uh, for those graduates because it was all the effort of the community trusting in us um, and seeing success. Their students were doing well and they were nurtured and all the good things about character of education and all those types of things, um, worked. So that's why we had the success that we had and continue to have that success right now.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. I appreciate the question. Thank you. Any other questions?
I have a quick question. When you look at our, uh, current community, where do you think you would add the most value from our committee's perspective? Whether it's in policy or it's in human resources or it's in finance, what do you feel you would want to contribute the most?
Um, I, I, anything with, um, diversity, equity, inclusion. I would love to be involved in that. Um, policy is also good. I'm working on my strategic planning skills and my, uh, budgeting skills. I just finished a course in that and I got an A, so I think we'll be good with that. Um, I, really, I know the inner, I, I, I have felt, I have lived the inner workings of schools for so long. Like I live and breathe schools and I, I love them very much and I, I'm a strong advocate for students and I want, um, I, my primary thing is for every student to get what he or she deserves in order to succeed. So I see myself, um, I, I'm a curriculum person. I do a lot of, I, I'm one of those people who was, who wears, had to wear a lot of hats. And I've took, I've taken leadership roles throughout my career, um, and I've had success with that and I just want it, I want to be able to contribute if I'm able to, if the, if the opportunity presents itself. Yeah.
One question, some more of a logistical question.
Sure.
Um, you're in your second year of this program. Will you be having to travel to Cambridge for that?
It's a, we are very fortunate that it's an online program, so, um, very, very fortunate.
You are, because you were at the program in 2016 and it was not, so I would never do it.
Yes, yes.
I hope you get some amazing applause.
Yes, absolutely. That's what they promised us and that's what we've seen and that's what we've suffered through and it's, it's been great.
Any other questions for board members?
Alright, thank you so much for your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Dea Gennar. Ms. Sheridan Huton Pickara.
I think you speak number five.
Rachel.
Rachel.
Ms. Saskia Leo Sabriani. Mr. Jadi Mathur.
Hello. My name is Jadi Mathur and, uh, I have been living here in Montgomery for about 10 years now. I have two kids, uh, who have, uh, been here in the Montgomery Township, uh, School District since their kindergarten. They are now in eighth grade, going into the high school, uh, this coming school year. I have, uh, I've been working with JP Morgan for the past, uh, three and a half years now as a strategic, uh, leader for, uh, for the company's data management. I lead with, uh, all these, uh, emerging technologies and, uh, evaluating various, uh, STEM-related activities within the company. Uh, prior to that, I've been working with Johnson &amp; Johnson and prior to that, I have, uh, I have been an entrepreneur, uh, working on, uh, on the software. Uh, I have done my bachelor's and master's in business administration. I have recently completed, uh, Master of Sciences in data analytics. And, uh, I also hold some postgraduate diplomas in computers and applications. For me, uh, I find this, uh, opportunity very exciting to come here for the Board of Education in Montgomery School District. I've been studying the progress and the contributions done by the board and it's, uh, it's great. However, when I compare it with the other school districts, I feel that we have not progressed much. Although doing a great job here, uh, kudos to you all for all these years that you have worked on. But when I compare it with the other school districts, they seem to be going much faster, improving their, uh, ranking and the performance of the students, uh, across the school districts. And, uh, this is what is motivating me to join this board to see if I can lead some strategies, study what is, uh, the issues, underlying issues or gaps which we can improve upon so that the students can benefit and the community or the residents of this Montgomery Township can benefit. Thank you.
Board members, any questions?
I have a question. So, uh, with your experience, uh, what do you think you can bring to the board to allow you with better assessment of where we are and what opportunities we have for improvement? How would you approach assessing progress and how would you, uh, assess what exactly needs to be done? Especially when this is a very short term, so to my fellow, uh, board member question, would you consider running later to extend the term and actually complete the vision?
So I have been leading a lot of strategic projects where the decisions are made based on the data and the data is the key where you collect the data, you understand what exactly the data says, compare with the, uh, similar data from the other places, like other school districts, and, uh, take actions on those, uh, data points. Now, I have experience leading all these type of cohorts, uh, working groups where we analyze, collect the data, analyze the data, uh, understand the use cases and come up with a short term and long term plans. So this is where I can contribute towards the school in improving these things. Yes, I understand that this position is a very short term period, however, uh, the things or the analysis can be done in a very short period of time. And the strategic vision, it takes time. It doesn't come in overnight. It doesn't go in a month of weekends. It takes years for achieving those goals and this is where I can contribute in helping this school district come up better.
Any other questions for board members?
I want to have a frank conversation with you. Being on the Board of Education has been an experience for myself. I love the short-term strategy, but this is a long-term strategy.
Absolutely.
I think that what you have to offer is, is very valuable to the school district, but question for you is, would you consider running for a longer term, not just completing this year's term?
Absolutely. My school, uh, my kids are in the high school now or they will be going to high school. So I'll be here for at least four years, uh, before they move to Ivy College. So yes, I'm here for a long term.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Mr. Ganesh Nagarajan. I hope I did not butcher it. Help with no good.
That was right.
Try.
Good evening. My name is Ganesh Narayan. First, I want to thank you for this opportunity to be a part of this conversation. I think this is a very important conversation because, uh, I think there are many challenges in the world today that are circulated down to our own communities, right? We're seeing, uh, a lot of political tension, political alignment, uh, which is dividing our communities, number one. Number two, we're seeing tremendous new technologies like, uh, generative AI, right? Which is changing the way that we are going to be teaching our kids and the way our kids are learning, right? Number three, uh, what we're seeing is the Montgomery Township itself and the demographics of township have shifted and, and the population that we're trying to address, uh, is demanding more transparency, is demanding more, uh, accountability, right? Demanding more inclusion, right? And, and a lot more communication in order to, uh, you know, bring all the stakeholders together, right? In that context, you know, uh, when I see outside in, I feel that our district has done a good job and, you know, I think we are doing, uh, the right things, right? But, but I also feel that, hey, this is an opportunity for us to kind of go from good to great, given where we are today, right? And, uh, have a vision to become one of the top 10 schools in the country, right? Uh, that's the, that's the vision that I'm feeling. When I look at what we're doing today as board members, right? I know that you have short-term goals, which is really about fixing the transportation facilities, you know, upgrading the infrastructure, renew HES, right? Getting new personnel, uh, for mental health. These are some good, good short-term initiatives that you guys are driving. With that, I also would like to kind of have a longer-term vision, like how can this board drive, you know, a lot more inclusion and diversity, number one. And number two, how can we drive, you know, how can we have an environment for the kids, right? So that they are more holistic, right? We are not only trying to make them college-ready, but, uh, can they be happy, number one? Can we make them happier as part of the ecosystem, number one? And number two, how do we evolve them to be good humans, right? That's the vision that I have. That's what I'm here and if I can contribute, I'll be happy to contribute. Very passionate about education because of two reasons. Two of my kids here who are part of the education system, right? That's really the leverage and that's the reason I'm here. Uh, I bring about 20 years of, uh, diverse experience, right? Uh, in terms of selling technology, uh, so what I do is really bring collaboration between all the stakeholders and to solve complex business problems driven through technology, right? That's, that's what I bring. In terms of my,
Thirty seconds.
Yeah. In terms of my volunteering experience, I bring, uh, a good amount of experience in the field of education and microfinance, both here, in the US and in India. For example, last year, uh, I was the parent coach, uh, leading the Lego League team, which is a robotics competition for my kids, where we won the Rising Star Award in New Jersey. That's just one simple example. Uh, in terms of my own education, you know, I have a master's in business administration, a bachelor's in engineering. What that means is, hey, I can look at, I feel that I can look at problems both from an emotional and a logical perspective. Thank you. Okay, thank you. So I feel I can bring a fresh perspective. I would be, uh, would be happy and would love to be on your team if given an opportunity.
Thank you. Board members, any questions?
I'm gonna go first, Miss Najana. Don't try to steal my mic. Um, you said you're, uh, passionate about good ecosystem for our kids in the school district. What does that mean to you? What do you, well, how would you describe this ecosystem?
I think two things, right? Uh, I have my own examples, which are a mix total. I did speak to about 10 different people before coming with this meeting as part of this process, just to get a sense, right? So, uh, when I talk about the ecosystem, it's really about how do we engage the teachers, the parents, the school administration, and the board, right? Together, right? How do we really bring them? Because of changing, uh, uh, you know, uh, because of changing demographics, right? I think the expectations really, uh, there are a lot of cultural nuances that I think can be better addressed if we were to drive the policy that way. I always look at this board as forward-looking, right? Trying to not just, on the one hand, do the short-term things, say you've got to look at the budget, right? You've got to get the right superintendent and make sure that the school is running as intended. But on the other hand, you know, what is the broader vision, right? Where do we want to be in three years, five years? And that has to, that cannot happen by chance. You have to decide what the strategy is, start implementing, you know, small steps, right? My expertise really is about bringing digital transformation technologies which go like a five-year mark and you say, hey, in order to do this, year one, month one, week one, I've got to do this, right? All this drive towards your end, go towards a vision and that's what I mean by the ecosystem. How do you bring the community together into this conversation, right? A good example, anecdotal example, right? We've got, I would have expected more people here for something so important, right? So how do we enable that, right? It's not like people don't want to come. I think it's really about empowering them. Uh, maybe they come once, they say, "Hey, I don't find this valuable. I'm not able to really influence this," right? People are going to quickly give up. How can we change that, right? Can we, uh, I think you guys are doing fabulous job, given where you are, right? So my goal really is to see, uh, how can we do these incremental improvements, right? So I'm not here to criticize. I don't believe in that, right? I don't see any value in them. My goal really is to say, hey, can, do we have a longer-term vision? If so, is it communicated back to all of the stakeholders here, right? And how can they contribute to our community and in a useful manner, right? So that we all move the mission forward.
Thank you.
I have a question now.
Okay.
So you, you mentioned that you, you have a vision or you want to build a vision that's more long-term. We just completed a three-session, a strategic planning program and I'm just wondering if you got a chance to come to any of those sessions and give your input?
Yes, I did register for this. I was there for one of the sessions of the three that you had, uh, did give some inputs and I have a small group of friends who kind of debate this a lot and we kind of cover each other and say, hey, here are five things I want to talk about because we are not going to be available sometime because of our commitments. But when I see this as an opportunity, hey, here is an opportunity for me to be committed a lot more and bring the ecosystem, right? Of people, of my own community, right? Uh, I live in this, uh, four-year-old community called Country Club Estates. So big new ecosystem of people who are, uh, you know, willing to engage, willing to be a part of this conversation and I feel that I can be that representative who can pull in those people as just an example of, you know, uh, how this conversation can move forward.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the board members? Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Ms. Banita Rarvan.
My name is, good, good evening, respected members of the board, educators, and fellow community members. My name is Banita Rarvan. I'm a proud resident of Skilman, New Jersey. Today, I stand before you as a candidate for Montgomery Township Board of Education. When my son first started his grade school, elementary school, in East Brunswick School District, I was, my initial encounter with educational system in the United States was, that was the first time. As an immigrant, I was very unfamiliar with the intricacies of the system, the teachers, the programs, the activities. By the time my daughter began her schooling, I was not only well acquainted with the teachers, but also had become an active member of PTA and went on to take the responsibility of PTA treasurer. In my role with the PTA, I organized fundraisers, volunteered in classroom and sports events and introduced new initiatives like Theater Week and International Day in schools. This involvement was pivotal. It was how I gained interest, understanding of school finances and teamwork with administration and staff. Furthermore, working as a substitute teacher in all grade levels offered me invaluable insights into classroom dynamics and challenges teachers face. My commit, my commitment led to further into heart of our educational framework when I joined Board of Education as a senior bookkeeper of Student Services Department. Over the past 17 years, my role has expanded my perspective beyond my own children to the broader educational needs of our district. My in-depth knowledge of department budget and difficulties of growing cost of independent service providers has made me a great negotiator, resulting in huge cost savings for the district. My involvement in education has been parallel by my commitment to our community. As a leader of Indian cultural society, I have organized events that celebrated our cultural heritage while fostering an inclusive community spirit. Similarly, in Montgomery, my initiatives were designed to unite a diverse group of community members through many fun events. These experiences highlight my commitment to the values of diversity, inclusiveness, and educational excellence that define our district. Given the opportunity, I would like to work with the members of the Board of, Board and superintendent of this well-known and prestigious school district with new ideas, with with new ideas that all result in great source of revenue to the district and lessen the burden on taxpayers. Programs which will benefit the community and the school district like Early Learning Academy with preschool setting, renting our facilities to ticketed events in the community are few ideas I hope to bring forward for your consideration. In conclusion, my experience across educational, financial, and community roles have equipped me with unique blend of insights and skills to bring about meaningful changes. I am dedicated to ensuring that every student and staff in our district feels valued and receives the best possible opportunities. Thank you so much.
Board members, any questions? Do you have a question?
You mentioned that you currently work in a role of a bookkeeper at another school district, and you have seen being implemented and maybe you inspire some, you know, different sources of revenue that you can bring to the district that would fund our programs, but at the same time lessen reliance on the tax levies. Can you maybe tell us more about those initiatives? Or like how easy they were and how time-consuming they were to implement to make them successful?
It is a very successful initiative at East Brunswick School District, and it has provided employment opportunities, part-time, full-time, and administrative employment opportunities. And it gets cool. So we have preschool settings, after-school, before-school, and the entire day school. You can, it's an à la carte or part-time, you know, preschool settings, where parents drop off their kids, just like any daycare, but here there are trained teachers who are teaching your kids. And that has become very, very well-known, and they have extended their program for adult education and then extended their program for not only classrooms and then sports. They have indoor guitar, they have indoor soccer, all the team sports and things like that, and art enrichment too. So that program has become very, very successful in East Brunswick. So I feel like it is something Montgomery can really benefit with. So being in that school district, I have these many of the ideas and information how we can implement in this district and reduce the burden on taxpayers. I have to say, I have to applaud you guys, you have done a wonderful job in balancing your budget when so many neighboring school districts have, are struggling. They're firing people, the teachers, and I have to say that you guys have done a wonderful job, and I would love to be part of this winning team and be a part of the community as well and bring my experience here.
Thank you.
Yes, you are, you've heard quite a lot of East Brunswick, and my heart goes out to the teachers there for you. Same question as I asked before and then Joanna picked up on. Would there be a chance of you having an interest in running for the open position in November to continue the work if selected?
Absolutely, my kids are all grown up and gone out of the house, I have time, I have interest, I have passion.
I'm supportive.
Yeah, so my three P's, proactive, passion, and productivity. That's what I look for, for anything to enrich athletics, academics, and arts in this school district.
And I just want to add patience, because if you are on the board, you know what that means.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other questions, board members? Thank you very much.
Again, thank you for this opportunity.
This is Aman Harvi?
Good evening, board members, I'm Aman Harvi. I have been a resident of Delmy for two years now, and I've been a member of this community, of this school for two years, it's an awesome community. And ever since we moved here, I felt like we belonged here, we should have moved here much earlier. As per my, something about my education, I'm an electronics and telecommunications engineer with an MBA from Rutgers in marketing and finance, and also an advanced degree in data analytics from Seton Hall University. From an experience perspective, I have 20 years of industry experience, and out of which the last 16 years is with Verizon, where currently I am an associate director in finance. So, and I manage a multiple million dollar budget with a lot of it involving procurement, purchasing, contract negotiations, so all that is part of my daily job. So, I'm gonna go to my notes. So I would also like to mention about, you know, my work ethics and how I am as a human. I have always gravitated towards, you know, leadership roles, I mentioned that in my resume as well. Right from my school days to college and also at my work, I have always taken up roles that are, that involve more than day-to-day. And that's why, you know, right now what matters to me most is the school district. And I thought it's the right time in my life, this opportunity came in at the right time, and I was already thinking about it. And because there's so many things that interest me here at the school and so many things that I think I could make a positive impact. One of them would be, you know, my desire to make the school, you know, a place where students feel already is, absolutely Montgomery is way better than a lot of other schools we have been to. But still, I feel there's still sometimes, you know, bullying and, you know, on a daily basis. And there's more work that could be done, and, you know, and I'm sure as board members you are all working on it, that I thought if I could be part of that, where we could make this whole place a very safe place and...
You have 30 seconds on it.
...nurturing place, so that when your kids, you know, they grow up, they come out as a strong, emotionally stable people, and that's what, you know, will make them contribute to the next generation. And, you know, as a whole, it will be better for society. And what better place than to start at a school? I've always been part of volunteer events, but this would be the best place to be. Thank you, Banita.
Any questions for board members? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Amit, good job.
Good evening, board members and community, the students, parents, and the community of Montgomery. So my name is Amat Pujara, I've been eight years resident of Montgomery now, and I have two kids. One just graduated from high school last year, my daughter is still in high school, and I enjoyed being part of this community, my kids have been working well for this community. And at this moment, you know, I've been a management consultant for 20-plus years, and then after that, I moved into my own business, and now at the moment, I just want to go back to the community and I'm trying to see where I can contribute. In my management consulting experience, I was, I've played in many various industries at different levels, specifically as, you know, creating the long-term goals and then covering the milestones, based strategy to get to those long-term goals. And my focus has been on the process improvement, along with efficiencies of the, using efficiencies of technology and integrating that to the processes. So that, what I have done before in the consulting experience, now being a business owner, I do all the different roles, including finance, hiring, providing policies, you name it, and I'm in it. And at the moment, I'm thinking to come back and give some contribution to the one for me, and that is what I have.
Any questions for board members? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Ms. Ifra Rashid?
Good evening, everyone, my name is Ifra Rashid. I'm going to start off with basically my education, because I've been living in Montgomery for the past three years. And I started working as an educator when I came back to the United States in November of 2020. I've been substituting over here in the Montgomery School District from February of 2024. Recently, I started a position at Goodwill's Cullens Academy as an adult education coordinator. It's basically an ESL program, I'm coordinating for them. And as far as my qualification goes, I have completed a Bachelor's degree in public administration, completed my entire education in Pakistan, came here back in November 2020, started off like the remote school teacher, then I was doing an ESL course for, as an adult educator with the USPL. Then I started substituting here, and then it's like the Goodwill position that I just started. Yesterday, today was my second day, and then I came home, just dropped off everything and headed to this meeting. For me, being on the Board of Education, it just means to bring more value to the school district, see where the school district is lacking, and to plan for overcoming those problems. So for me, first step of solving a problem is to identify what it is, and then looking for viable solutions for that problem. Some solutions, they're, they take very less time to come up, some solutions are going to take a lot of time to come up. If I'm selected to do this position, I am obviously going to try and run for it in November as well. But other than that, I would like to say that this school district is a very good school district. I've learned about, while I was substituting, I've obviously been an elementary teacher, but it tells me a lot about how the school, you know, if you start good, you are always going to end good. So this is one thing that I like about this school district, and I would just like to bring that. One thing going forward is that I would like to increase diversity and inclusion in this school district.
I have 30 seconds.
Because I feel that it's, there is a lot of diversity and inclusion, but there is still space for growth everywhere.
Any questions for board members?
Are you, you're no longer substituting?
Yeah, I am.
Thank you so much. Dr. Noah Seig? Hopefully I get that right.
Good evening, my name is Noah Seig. Thank you for the opportunity to be considered for this position on the board. I'm a proud Montgomery resident, and it would be a real honor and a privilege to be able to represent the Montgomery community in this role. First and foremost, I am a proud father of three young daughters. They'll be students in the Montgomery Township School District for another 15 years. So I have a deep and vested interest in the success of our school system. Really, that's the reason why I'm applying for this board. I have a long history of community service. When I was an undergraduate at Princeton, I built homes for the unhoused. When I was in medical school, I served as an administrator at several outreach clinics throughout the city of Chicago. And now, as a physician, I continue to provide free treatment to uninsured patients. I feel like now I want to direct this spirit of community service to the local school system. You know, in my line of work, you go to school for a very long time, and in that long journey, I attended several different academic institutions. And I happened to hold leadership positions at each of those institutions that allowed me to directly interact with administrators at the school. And so I noticed firsthand the unique way that each of these schools did things, their different administrative strategies, and I really got to see what worked and what didn't work so well with regards to governance, with regards to philosophy. And I think that experience would really be valuable as far as instructing me as a member of the school board. Professionally, as a physician, I think that there are many characteristics that would be useful in helping to guide our school district. As a physician and a surgeon, really the nature of my job is to identify problems and then to devise and implement solutions. My work is defined by my ability to listen thoughtfully, to be open-minded, and to communicate effectively. I'm accustomed to interacting with people who come from a wide variety of backgrounds and who hold a lot of different opinions. And overall, I consider myself a pretty balanced and measured person, which I think would be a good demeanor to be on the school board. Lastly, I certainly have plenty of leadership experience. I serve on multiple professional boards, I'm the head of multiple professional work groups. So I have a lot of experience collaborating with other professionals, team building on large projects, spearheading initiatives, certainly listening to feedback and making difficult decisions. Overall, my, my goal for serving on the board is pretty simple. I want to foster a school system that serves its entire community with all of its diverse viewpoints, and I'd like to assist the school system in constantly becoming a better version of itself. So I'm very interested in filling this current vacancy. I think I'm well-qualified to do so. I thank you again for your consideration, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Board members, any questions?
I have a question. So you mentioned that you held multiple leadership positions at different institutions, organizations. So being on the board means that you really govern as opposed to getting involved in daily operations? But we do have committees, right? And each committee focuses on different aspects of the school district operations. So with your experience and with your perspective, what do you think your skill set would fit the best to which committee?
Yeah, and I think that what is nice about having served in these various positions throughout my background and in previous positions is the ability to really adapt and to learn. You know, I'm not going to stand up here and say how to do your job. You guys are the best people to know how to do your job, but I think what is really a critical skill is the ability to enter a situation that maybe you don't have a lot of experience with right in that moment, to listen, to learn, and then to just apply the critical thinking skills to be able to say, here's a perspective, here's what I think would be useful. So I don't necessarily think that my previous experience would be limited or tailored to a particular committee, but just the overall experience of having done it, I think, could be tailored to any of those committees.
Maybe I do want to ask your question?
Sure, are you first and running after?
Yeah, I feel like, you know, it is a short-term position, it would be an honor to do just that short-term, but like I said, I'm in this for the long haul, I have three young kids that I want to see have a great school experience, so absolutely.
So having three young kids in the school, what would be one thing you would want to achieve throughout your term to call it success?
Yeah, I want them to be excited about academics, that's really what it comes down to. You know, I grew up in a family where academics was absolutely the most important value that we grew up with. It was very important, it was highly celebrated. I enjoyed going to school, I had a good time going to school. I went to school for a really, really long time, and so I would love it for them to have that same excitement about education. And, you know, there's a lot of nuts and bolts, there's a lot of the school drama, right? You can't avoid all of that, but I think top level, I just want them to have a good experience in the Montgomery School District.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Ms. Jay Sri Shrikam?
Good evening, ladies, gentlemen, committee, and all my fellow members. My name is Jay Shrikam, I'm a resident in Montgomery, it's been six years, can't believe it. When I was looking for our house, when we were moving from Connecticut, we were looking in Bridgewater. And the first thing our realtor said is, we have three children, young children as well, and the first thing she said is, you're looking, you should be looking in Montgomery. And we have never heard about this town. And we have never heard about this town before and I was like, okay, let's go to Montgomery. The best decision we have ever made. Truly, my son, who was not speaking, we moved here when he was just six. The care, the special needs he got truly showed that we are in the right place to bring up our children. So that brings me to why I'm here today. To be part of the committee means we're, I'm an advocate, or we're an advocate for the children, we speak for them, we're the voice for the children. I'm an educator, I've been an educator for over 20 years. A little less known fact about me is I actually am a preschool teacher, but mostly everybody knows me as a dance choreographer. I run dancing studio for Montgomery, which I began here in 2018. And today I'm teaching to almost 100 students enrolled, all from Montgomery, from pre-K up to 12th grade. So I am with the children every day, talking to them firsthand. I work with Sensation, the Montgomery High School team. I also work with the International, I'm here, International Night Strawberry Festival, every event that happens in Montgomery, I am pretty much here. And I listen to my students and I come with that knowledge that what is happening with them. So one of the few things, I don't have too much time, but few key things that I have over the course of the years being with the children is, they all have so much stress. So one of the things I was thinking about, I'm a Reiki master and a healer, is implementing mindfulness into, in a very strategic way, five minutes every day just before this, you know, they all sit down, a little bit of calming down, breathing in. I do see children are very hyper, the focus, again, we're going to blame tablets, we're going to blame technology, but at the end of the day, the children need something to just need something to just hone in. I also truly believe in technology and the future is AI. And I know you all are thinking, Jax, GPT. No, there is a new one that's come out from Khan Academy, Khan Migo. So again, just bringing this conversation, starting this conversation about how can we bring technology, how can we bring mindfulness, holistic approach? We all are worried about the future of our children. We together can truly take Montgomery to the next level. It's already amazing. We get going.
Thank you.
I'm open to any questions.
More members, any questions?
Same question. As far as beyond the tenure and this position, would you consider running in November for further growth?
Absolutely. I will be here for as long as I can be, many, many years. I do have young ones, so I will be in the, in the system for a very long time. So I'm more than happy to be part of the team. Thank you. Oh, thank you so much. Have a good evening.
Dr. Ting Wen?
Good evening, everybody. Thank you so much for the opportunity and the time. In my three minutes, I would like to firstly introduce who am I? And second, I would like to talk about what areas I would like to see strengthen with the school district. And third, I want to talk about what specific skills that I can bring to the board. So who am I? I'm Ting. I received my Bachelor in English Education and then I also received my Master of Arts from, focused on educational policy and administration from the University of Minnesota in Twin Cities. I received my PhD from Measurement Statistics and Research Design from the University of Washington in Seattle. Currently, I worked as a data person, data scientist at Ruckus Institutional Research. Before I joined Ruckus, I finished my tenure at Educational Testing Service as a research scientist. So that's I am. I'm of course a resident of Montgomery. My husband and I, we moved into the school five years ago and we have two beautiful daughters and one of them has a pre-K. So that's who I am. And second, I want to talk about what areas I would like to strengthen within the school district. I did a little bit of work on checking school district mission statement, vision statement and the school goals before school goes. So what I really would like to strengthen would be strengthening the academic learning through the multi-tiered system of supports. This really aligns well with the district mission. And focusing on MTSS really directly support the goal one of increasing student success across all classroom settings. By implementing MTSS, also the district can provide personalized support to students at various levels of need. This ensures every student receives the necessary resources and intervention to survive academically. So no, we're not just talking about students who are struggling, but also we're focusing on mainstreams and we're also focused on the, provide support to the talent persons. So we can make sure the whole boat blow up. So this approach really aligns with the mission of empowering every student to succeed in a diverse dynamic and global society by providing quality educational experiences. So a third, I would like to talk about what I can bring to the board.
I have thirty seconds left.
Good. I'll bring diverse skills up to the board, particularly my background in measurement, statistics, and research design, which support data-driven decision-making here. At Ruckus, my role as a data scientist involving collaborating with various departments, schools, to develop statistical models and analyzing data for decision-making on enrollment and academic program. I also have extensive experience leading call and non-call activities.
Thank you.
Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Questions for the board?
I have a question. So currently, our district is already implementing universal
Design?
Let me help you out with the proper name.
Universal Design for Learning.
Universal Design for Learning. So how is that approach, how is that model different from the model that you are suggesting?
Oh, that's not different, but I would say it's like, MTS is a very complex system, a very complex model. So this can support at individual level, as a group, and also focus on small groups and also individual group, as I mentioned. So it's not like they're mutually exclusive of each other, but this also can increase the teacher effectiveness as well. So when we talk, and we all know, like, school have a certain budget and how we allocate that resource and budget into the key area, that's the sort of really is like what I can bring to the board is because, you know, my background, my training, my current working experience, my past working experience, all can help us make more strategic planning about how we can allocate this resource.
Same question?
Yes.
Would you consider running past this round?
Yes, that's a really great question. My husband and I actually would talk about this all fly at home too. We, not just I am, have a PhD in education area, my husband, he's also a faculty at Ruckus, majoring in school psych. So we talk this on and off for work, off work, all the time. We're joking like, if I'm not selected, you better go for the next.
Can I breathe in, breathe out?
Yes. We really want to do something good for the community, no matter who's being selected. We're really happy to see so many candidates respond to our call. That's I really happy to see and I just try doing my best too.
Yeah, I was just going to say that, selected or not, right? Your, your background and your capabilities are very helpful to the school district. So we hope to see you at some of the board meetings in the future with some suggestions and guidelines as you're seeing things that we could continue improving in this role. Thank you.
Thanks so much. Ms. Catherine Worland?
Greetings, board members and fellow members of our community. My name is Catherine Worland and I've been grateful to live in Montgomery Township the past 13 years. I'm honored to stand before you as a candidate to fill the vacancy on the Board of Education. I'm a proud advocate for education and for our schools and I am deeply committed to fostering continued successes within our school district. Education has been a lifelong passion for me. I graduated Phi Beta Kappa from Columbia University and studied abroad at University College London. Those diverse and enriching experiences helped create a foundation rooted in academic excellence and dedication to lifelong learning. My experience as a professional academic tutor instilled in me not only a profound appreciation for students as individuals, but also a recognition of the importance that all students have access to learning opportunities tailored to fit their personal needs. My involvement in crafting curriculum for a gamut of learners and learning styles was aimed at providing those opportunities, for talented students to be challenged and for struggling students to be supported, so both can achieve beyond what they thought possible. I'm deeply involved in this community because I believe in it. I previously ran the parent association at a local private school. I've been a class parent multiple times and am currently the treasurer for our elementary school's parent-teacher association. I am intimately familiar with the relentless time and energy commitment required to deliver a great experience for kids, interfacing with parents in the broader community, coordinating logistics to manage organizations, and quantifying details of financial stewardship and fundraising. Both my children are enrolled here in our school district for the next decade, one in fourth grade and one in kindergarten. So I have a long-term interest in how our schools provide an enriching educational framework that meets our students' social, emotional, and academic needs. In fact, it was my conviction in the transformative power of public education in this district that influenced my deliberate decision to move my son from private schooling to Village Elementary School. So I know that Montgomery is a special district. That's what makes this board important. It is tasked with simultaneously enabling the highest possible academic achievement, supporting a wide variety of student needs, and navigating an environment full of strongly held perspectives. That's why I'm seeking this position on the Board of Education. I'm driven first by a steadfast commitment to prioritizing student success for each student. I'm driven by a desire to see our schools continue to operate with integrity and openness. And I am driven to build an atmosphere that is safe and inclusive for our kids while encouraging them to grow and develop. I look forward to the opportunity to help achieve those shared goals through open dialogue with our parents and community and through action and responsibility that is the mandate of this board. Thank you for considering my candidacy. I hope to continue to serve our school community as a member of the board.
Questions, board members?
I'm a resident with long-term interest in the yes or no.
Yes, last Monday in July for the petition.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Dr. Divya Sarin?
Good evening, folks. Thank you, esteemed board members, for this opportunity and thank you for the kindness that you give from the audience and residents of Montgomery. My name is Divya Sarin, Sarin as in, trying to live up to my name, Sarin. I, a little bit about myself, I am a full-time internist and specialist practicing in the field and science of medicine. I have 22 years of being a passionate and committed professional in providing empathetic and sympathetic care to patients in the greater Philadelphia area. This experience has taught me to hone my skills not only as a team player, but also in providing passionate care, building young physicians for tomorrow, mentoring our young medical students, residents, and the physician leaders of tomorrow. As part of my work and role as a physician, I'm also involved in multiple community health awareness, fairs, events, and truly working at the grassroots levels to enlighten people on both emotional, mental, and physical health. In my greater role in life, I'm also a mother of two daughters who have flown through the Montgomery Township School District. One is now pursuing a doctorate in clinical psychology and the other one is soon ready to branch out in the world of medicine. I think as a parent, I have heavily relied on this community on three different levels. At a personal level, and this is a deeply personal level, sudden loss of a spouse and raising two children under the age of 10, I truly realize what the phrase, you know, it takes a village to raise a child, that came home to me. I relied heavily on teachers, excellent supportive staff, after-school activities, summer camps, high school teen drivers and nannies to raise my two girls. And this is my time to give back. This comes, this motivation to serve on this board position really comes from a very personal base in my heart. I've lived here 18 years and I hope to live another 18 years in Montgomery. I've seen Montgomery grow from a very small, bucolic community to a very thriving, bustling
I have thirty seconds.
multi-ethnic community. We're seeing multiple residential and commercial inroads happening every day. And I think as my role, if I were to be offered this board position, I would like to work with the esteemed board members in terms of solving issues like the financial stresses with, as new families move in, new children move in, you know, it will certainly create a stress on both our physical needs, our teacher resources.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions from board members? Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Still, this time, I just want to say thank you to all the applicants. One of the words that board member, look adjourned again, I'll do it too, was patience. So now is the time for you all to be patient. As you can see, we have a group of students over here, so we're going to let them present as there's some testing going on, so we want to get them home and rested and well-fed so they can test well tomorrow. After they do their presentation, there will be a time for public comment and those public comments will only be on the applicants. There will be another public comment for the record issue, but the public comment portion right after the students present will be public comments on the applicants only. Superintendent Pott?
Good evening, everyone. First, I want to recognize the Memorial Day holiday and to all of those who sacrificed their lives for our country. In addition, I would like to recognize and thank their families for the loss they suffered on behalf of the United States. It is an honor to introduce Mr. Leight. I want to just talk about him for a second. He has left an indelible mark on the MHS Robotics Team since joining the team in 2006. His legacy includes sustained excellence with accomplishments such as the 2007 Woody Flowers Award, seven first robotics chairman awards for excellence, and the 2024 Jonathan Bowers Inspiration Award. What more important than these awards and accolades is the impact that he has had on thousands of students who found a home within Team 1403 Robotics Family here at MHS. I am proud to introduce Team 1403 to you all tonight as they demonstrate for the robotics team. Welcome.
Do you need to move that?
This is my. Thank you. They trained for that. They know that step forward, step back. We watched previous years for that.
Hello and thank you for having us here today as we share our robotics team's journey throughout this very exciting season. We will be going through our setbacks, achievements, and experiences that has allowed us to have one of the greatest successes in the city. Our team for the past year or so has worked tirelessly and has gone above and beyond to create a robust and efficient robot that is able to not only perform at our midland landing level, but also at a worlds level at Houston, Texas.
In 2004, Team 1403 was founded by 35 students in the garage with just a hope of being able to compete in their local robotics competition. On our 20th year anniversary, we're not just celebrating two decades of building robots, but hundreds of students who have came together to make this program possible. I would like to introduce to you today our rising seniors, Shriya, Ojas, Vijay, Arsh, and Sam. robots, but hundreds of students who have came together to make this program possible. I would like to introduce to you today our rising seniors, Shriya, Ojas, Vijay, Arsh, and Saki.
Hello, my name is Saki, and I'm a member of the outreach sub-team. This year, Team 1403 had the honor of competing in the Half-Brook Horseshoe District Event, where we placed fourth overall and also placed third in the final elimination round as alliance captains. In addition to our accomplishments on the field, we were also honored to have been awarded the gracious professionalism award, commemorating our efforts in supporting teams throughout the competition, always being ready to supply extra robot parts when needed. Thanks to members such as Vijay, the leader of the mechanical sub-team, and Itosh, the leader of the programming sub-team, we were able to address issues in our code and our robot's work module as they arose, allowing us to continue competing in the competition. Furthermore, our driver and team captain, Sai, was able to effectively manure our robot, allowing us to win many matches. Despite the setbacks that we faced throughout the competition, our team was able to persevere through our first competition. Not only this, we were able to garner experiences and lessons that we used throughout the season and applied throughout the season.
Hello, my name is Shriya. Each year, Team 1403 has the opportunity to host a district event. This year, we ranked seventh out of 36 teams and were an alliance captain. Although during elimination we lost our first match, we decided to change our strategy to have our robot participate in the tournament while other two alliance captains helped beat our robot. This change in strategy allowed us to travel the world and eventually get to the finals. Team 1403, we did qualify 2-0 winning the Montgomery District at the second year in a row. We also use our event as an opportunity to spread STEM. We invited speakers from Oregon State University and even invited Assemblywoman Drewless. Our head advisor, Mr. Leich, and our mentor, Mr. Murphy, were both recognized for separate awards for their charity efforts. Additionally, Ojas and I were honored with first teams list domination, which recognizes two individual students who have co-led the teams and spread the mission of first to the communities while also gaining personal and technical expertise and accomplishments.
Hello, my name is Arsh. Because of our strong performance at both the Half-Brook Horseshoe and Montgomery District Events, Team 1403 advanced to the first Mid-Atlantic District Championship at Lehigh University. Though the competition was intense, we finished in third place in the elimination matches as a captain of our alliance. Members from all of our robot sub-teams were able to implement solutions for issues and also ensure quality control up until last second. Shivam, one of our electrical co-captains, and Yusuf, one of our program members, were asked to complete the system test prior to every match and ensure that any potential issues were preemptively resolved. We were also presented with the first excellence in engineering award. This award recognizes our team's detailed engineering design process, our unique design functionality, and our targeted subsystem implementation to optimal gameplay. Both the award and our robot's performance allowed us to achieve the rank points to qualify for the first world championship.
Hello, my name is Vijay. As Arsh mentioned, we qualified to compete at the world stage for the third consecutive year of the first world championships in Houston, Texas. 600 teams from around the world went into eight divisions, and we placed them to the top. Over the course of three days, we were previous to the division as even as we last year's world championship high five. We entered in their 16th division, which is the highest ever team in this number today. The lower season ended there, we used robots to cultivate resources to better ourselves in the future. All the best teams were able to take the opportunity to talk on the side of the robot design and having a chance to evaluate our team. The body is a distributed process, not only for each robot within each season, but for the whole team across the season. Through various hardships and experiences, we were able to learn and better ourselves for the future.
Hey, I'm Ojas. Year-round, our team engages in outreach initiatives to impact the community and spread the message of first and STEM in hopes of inspiring and educating the future generations. As Shriya said, we invited Assemblywoman Drewless to our event and various women within the fields of STEM to share their experiences in our Women's STEM panels. One of our biggest initiatives comes from our work at the upper middle schools' personal league teams. Vihad, I think she's under there, are among some of our most dedicated mentors, constantly inspiring and guiding students through their season. Additionally, within UMS, we hosted multiple cup classes where team members have given presentations about skills needed for high school, such as organization and communication. And in an effort to connect with our community through STEM, for the high school's annual trunk and treat event, we repurposed an old robot with Halloween-themed theatrics to mesmerize the younger generations and intrigue them to ask questions about both our program and our robot. On Team 1403, we're more than just robots. We want to impact the community and ensure a brighter future for STEM overall.
In my past four years on the team, the memories I made are truly irreplaceable. From being a freshman to now team captain, I've had the opportunity to connect with so many people: my teammates, my mentors, and other people in the first robotics community, as well as see the impact that this program can have on students just like me. I know going forward, our team will be in great hands, and I can't wait to see what they accomplish. This team has given me instrumental skills that I'll be able to use in the fall as a person of computer science at Jackson University. This team's 20-year history would not have been as successful as it is without the support of the Montgomery Board of Education, so thank you so much.
As a future freshman at Rutgers University majoring in computer science and mathematics, I would also like to thank the Board of Education for making robotics a possibility at Montgomery High School. It was in 1403 where I not only learned my passion for STEM, but also the intrinsic relationships between these fields. However, I might have learned how to build a robot or assemble a machine, but the most important skill of 1403 DAMI is how to become a leader. Over the past three years, I've learned how to lead group efforts, contribute to group projects, while also serving it as, serving as an inspiration for my fellow team members. These skills will prove invaluable in my life, and I hope to use them as a spark on the next big challenge.
And this is our video.
robot's performance, or the opportunities we have and are continuing to iterate. We have witnessed many of our members expand beyond their comfort zones, excel in their leadership roles, and develop themselves to plans for entruring the future success of our team. Again, we'd like to thank you all so much for your devotion to STEM at MHS and for giving us the opportunity to present to you all today. At this time, we'd be happy to answer any questions related to our team or the season, and we'll also be displaying performance of a robot for you.
Maybe a few words from the gentleman in the background?
It's a suit to do it all.
Excellent, very welcome. Thank you.
May I just quickly ask about the world, was it world resource? Can you just in 30 seconds or less sort of explain what that is as a resource and how helpful it was to you, and if there are other resources like it that you'd like to think more about or, you know, would be helpful for your programming?
Yeah, we're so, all of us teams from around the world, who went to Worlds. And so, by us going there as well, we were able to talk to them and learn a lot about how they run their teams, how they build their robots. Very helpful for us.
Can I just give you one little comment, and thank you. My comment is, I was so impressed to hear that you, I think it was called the professionalism award that you received for being so kind to lend a helping hand in parts and everything else to other teams that you were competing against. I think that that shows tremendous character, and I'm very proud that to you kindness matters. The other thing that I would like to say thank you for is whatever fundraising you all did to help get the grant money to, for tonight we have an approval on our agenda for the purchase of a new router for you that's going to hopefully take everything to new levels. And so, your help with us, you know, in terms of us not having to approve that in terms of budgeting because of all the fundraising you did is great. So thank you so much. Thank you very much for all of the wonderful things that you've done for Montgomery.
Something else I'd really quickly like to add about the world championship. So as I mentioned, I've been on this team four years, so I'm a senior now. And like I said, I've connected with a lot of people: New Jersey, Pennsylvania, Delaware, so on. But we've also had the opportunity to connect with teams around the world. Like you just said, you meet the best of the best, and with that, not only are you learning from them, you get the opportunity to develop friendships with them. One of our sister teams actually, we were able to meet and we keep in contact with frequently, is from Australia. And the really cool thing is, Australia's in such a completely different time zone, and they have such different customs and habits. So it's really neat that every year, we're able to learn something from them, and they're able to learn something from us.
I can't be at all.
I can't be at all.
Everybody understands too, this robot was built 100% by the students in seven weeks.
So, I mean, we're normally able to shoot in a very far range, but given the safety issues.
We appreciate that.
Why not? But the whole goal of this game is that you have these rings on the ground, and what you're doing is you're trying to pick up these rings and score it into a small opening that's pretty high, it's about maybe five or five and a half feet high. And the whole point of this robot, this game itself, is it's almost like a, think about like a 3v3 basketball match, you know? So you have three on three, and you're basically scoring against each other while you also have other teams defending on you. So, I mean, throughout this last season, we went through a lot of hardships. As Mr. Leich said, everything that we do is, we do in-house, we machine every single part on this robot, we put it together. It's like even, we're talking about like Vijay, who's our mechanical captain, he works on making these parts, and then we have our electrical team that works on wiring the robot. So, I mean, our team is almost built like a family in a sense that we have multiple sub-teams, and without one of us, we wouldn't function at all. And this goes on also to our logistics side, whereas, you know, how are we going to build a robot if you don't have money? Like, there's that aspect of it too.
So, are you okay if we shoot along our shot?
Yeah.
Is that okay? I will go over there and shoot.
Or you can shoot that way.
Could you place a value on that, on the machine?
A value?
Yeah.
You're probably looking at about $4,000 or $5,000 sitting on the floor there. Just raw materials.
Just raw materials and electronics and parts and...
They may have.
That's endless.
And also, our final piece is, the end game of this game, like the last 30 seconds, right? The whole goal is to climb on a chain. So that's what these hooks are here for. And basically, our robot, you know, we're like zooming across the field shooting, and we're like, oh, we have 10 seconds, we really need to climb really fast. So then we just bring our hooks up and then go and climb on the chain. So, Wilson's going to demonstrate that pretty soon.
One thing else I'd like to say is, I want to thank the board for allowing us to host the Montgomery event. Yeah, we've been hosting, well, either the off-season or the Montgomery event. We've hosted our Montgomery event for about eight years now, and we are the largest, we have 36 teams come. It is our largest fundraising event. We sell a lot of hot dog and pizza. But that allows us to buy the machine we are buying. It's, tomorrow morning, the PO and the check is going out FedEx as soon as you tell me it's approved. We're trying to get it in before December's end, but it's going to mimic a machine we already have in place, Tormach, our computer milling machine. This will give us a little more ability to work with lexans, woods, and it will also cut aluminum. And it's also going to be integrated into the fabrication lab, so we have a lot of students now that are doing more complicated woodworking projects like guitars, where we can now put a piece of wood in this machine, they can design it, press a button, and it'll make a guitar bass. So there's a lot of really great things that we can do with it, just trying to get to the next level. So...
Can I ask you a quick technical question?
Sure.
When you shoot those, there's no rotation on those, right? They just shoot straight up? I'm just, I'm not a robotics team, but would you get more stability if you were able to put some rotation on them? Maybe get some...
So, we actually prototyped that. When we went through the prototyping phase, they put a compression wheel as well as a stealth wheel, so both of them have different pressure on the wheel, and it was able to make that thing fly, fire actually a lot straighter and further than what you saw earlier. However, because we already pre-implemented a design for our placement of our motors and other items, we noticed that we placed the compression wheel, it was next to our motor, it kept hitting that, and it was destroying that compression wheel. So we decided to mix that, because that pressure would have spun it and would have made it fly a lot truer. So we did discuss that and said, hey, that's another thing we could look into if we decide to do anything propelling for the future.
We were hoping to drive it here, but we really drive it on park, and we wanted to show, I didn't want to hear I destroyed your floor, so.
It's a very good ballerina.
It does, it runs at 13 feet per second, so it's fast and it's nimble. It's some new technology that we started last year. And like I said, it's not cheap. We're very lucky to have great corporate sponsors. You're one of our great corporate sponsors. Department of Defense, believe it or not, to continue Arsenal is another one of our big corporate sponsors. Bristol-Myers Squibb is a huge sponsor for the last 20 years. Johnson &amp; Johnson has helped us out a little bit. We're working on that one, and I don't know if we have to really properly introduce this to Matt Brady, who will be taking over as lead mentor next year.
Just a quick shameless plug, if you would love to follow our team, our handles are up on the board. If you have any questions or interested in supporting, either financially, intellectually, for the following season, that'd be also very, very helpful. We continue to work and operate actually not only during the school season, we still are working out, you know, the whole character has ended. We go through what we need to do to improve, we find ways for students to lead students, that's why it's a team-led program. We provide the instructional ability assistance to fill in the gaps where needed, and they're the ones who make sure, oh, okay, this is what I would have liked to have seen when I was going through this, and they're adapting it, they're making those changes firsthand, and that's what we do during the spring. And during the summer, we're looking to do more workshops with the individual students to build those independent skills for them. So if you have any of those concepts, or if you have any knowledge or way to support us, these are our handles, or just follow us. So that'd be great.
And we are a fully mentor-based program. We do have, we're lucky enough to have about 15 outside mentors, parents, alumni... We do have, we're lucky enough to have about 15 outside mentors, parents, alumni, who come back and work with the program, with the students. It's a huge part of our program and it's a really big part of how we do that as well. Great.
All right, let's give it up for Team 1403. So much. As I stated before the presentation, now's the time for public comments on the applicants only. Anyone else to make, the community, make any comments on the applicants? Yeah, would you say your good day and address?
Hi, I'm Adriana Safe, 30 Sweetwater Drive. I did not know there was gonna be public comment. Very exciting. I was going to talk and support Noah Safe, my husband. We've been together for 19 years, so I feel like I can say with some authority that he is a deeply kind, brilliant, thoughtful, empathetic human. And I was so excited when he told me about it a year ago, he was thinking about maybe getting brought to the school board. I can't say that I've seen him in a professional capacity too often, but I can tell you that after a long day at work, when he comes home, when all three of our children are simultaneously screaming, he can very creatively de-escalate that fight very quickly. And he is also one of the most thoughtful people I've ever known. You'll always find him reading you research about the work that he does. And he's one of those people that constantly takes in new information and allows his opinions to change based on what he's learning. He really doesn't like dig in. So, I know I'm biased. I think he would be an incredible asset on your team. And I really know he cares very deeply about this community. And this would be something that he would be very passionate about. So, thank you.
Any other public comments on the applicants?
Hi, Janet Church, Montgomery Township. I just wanna thank all of the applicants. It's great to see so many people that want to be a part of the school board and to hear so many great qualifications and intent and really wanna give back to the community. I do have to say, I'm especially impressed with some of the more business-oriented candidates. I feel like that would be a great asset to the board. We have a lot of educational representation here, and I think that the ones with some of more business attributes might be a great fit, but thank you very much.
Hi, Rich Speck, North Street, Belmeade. I actually want to also say that I appreciate everybody coming out. There is an amazing group of candidates, applicants, that you have to consider. As Anya had said, I hope that people will remain engaged and involved in board activities and coming out. Sometimes the board meetings, there are not that many people here, and it's good to have the community represented, so I hope you'll continue to do that. I don't envy the board your deliberations, but I wish you well. Being on the board requires a variety of interests, and I'm also pleased that most of the candidates weren't just focused on a single issue. They were looking at things very broadly, and I think that that's important. A primary consideration I hope you'll keep in mind is, as Janet said, is finding a board member who complements the existing board members. And so, what type of background do they have, experience, skills, and interests do they bring? For example, have they worked in industry? Do they have leadership or management experience to complement some of the board members who are currently serving? So, good luck and congratulations on having such an amazing number of people who've come out. It just shows that the community, how interested the community is in education.
Karen Anderson, Belmeade. Okay, I'll go to Laura. I just wanna thank you too. I was really shocked when I heard there was 19 candidates. I know not everyone showed up, but that's still an awesome number. What I would look for in a candidate, whoever it is, is somebody who can really bring out the crowds and bring and engage the community in the school board, because we've got a certain number of people that show up all the time. You probably, if you're tuned in, there's odds, okay? We get up here and it gets a little bit, right? What's the word? A little interesting. I sometimes think we should bring popcorn to these people's. But anyway, if you could do something to engage more people and get them involved and get them sharing their opinions, so it always doesn't feel like there's just two sides battling it out on here. Thank you very much.
Any other public comments? Any other public comments? Are we done public comments on candidates close? At this time, I entertain a motion to enter an executive session.
Seven seconds.
Proper move and second. Any questions or the motion? Although the favors date I. All right. You're now in the executive session. At this time, I entertain a motion to reconvene in open second.
Seven seconds.
The proper move and second to reconvene in open session. Although in favor state I.
Aye.
Opposed, say right. Motion carries. At this time, first of all, before I start, I just wanna thank all of the amazing candidates for your time and effort this evening. We appreciate you making our lives a little harder today. Good discussions, and we're gonna go from there. But again, just thank you all for your time and dedication. And whoever is seated, we hope you will continue to push us, engage with us, and continue to be productive members of the community. So, with that, floor is open for nominations for the vacant position of Montgomery Township School Board. Are there any nominations from the floor?
Yes, I'd like to nominate Vanita Nargan for the position of the vacant Board of Education seat.
I would like to second Vanita for the vacant seat.
It's been properly moved and second to nominate Vanita Nargan. Are there any other nominations from the floor? Any other nominations from the floor? Are we done? Nomination's are closed. Roll call.
Discussion.
Discussion on the nomination.
So, I'll start. I just, first of all, I just wanted to say to all the folks that came out tonight, thank you so much. Your expertise and knowledge is truly fantastic, and we are so excited to see so many of you here interested and wanting to participate. We were all having a conversation about the fact that, you know, how we started ourselves. I can speak for myself, but, you know, in the on-haw committees, you know, got engaged with the school district, got involved in different initiatives. So, we hope to, we have your names, so we...
Sounds like a threat.
We will be reaching out when opportunities come up, if you don't mind. And we do hope you come in and see us and bring some of your knowledge, expertise, observations. And most of all, I hope to see a lot of your names on the ballot in November, because we do have quite a few seats open. It would be fantastic to see you there and participate in this with us going forward. But I just really, truly appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I'd like to pretty much second what you just said. We had some pretty interesting conversations in there, because there's so much excellent skill in there. And since there will be four open seats, or four seats in the mall, I would like all of you guys to run in the malls, make it interesting.
I also want to, I would like to, sorry. I also want to comment that all your skill set is so wonderful and complimenting the board and your engagement and your positive, you know, thinking to bring positive influence to schools is something that really needs to stay live. And please don't stop, get engaged, and then run for the seats. And then be active on the PTOs, on the PTA's, and on any other events that the schools are putting together, like even the robotics team, because parents like you engage and very mindful about what they expect from the school is really what this community's about. And we, the board, represent the community. You, the parents, represent the community. We have to work together. We have to have a communication, channels of communications open, so please stay engaged.
Everything's been said, but I just wanna say thank you for coming out tonight. Truly an impressive, impressive candidate pool. And I would just say, continue to please spread the word. We really are encouraged and energized by the idea that there are so many of you out there that want to be involved. And so, please just help us spread the word and help us fill all of those seats that are out there, so that we can have engaging board meetings that are so really important and vital to the way that we move forward as Board of Trustees. So, thank you to each and every one of you. Sorry, I can't talk to you.
And as I said before, I just wanna reiterate, thank you guys again. Such an amazing pool of candidates. And it was, it was a difficult decision. You were all qualified in different ways. But we, you know, we making our decision based on what we think is best for the board at this current time. We hope you all do not get discouraged and keep fighting. As has been said, there are four seats available in November, three three-year terms, and one two-year unexpired term. So, keep fighting. Thank you. Any comments? Roll call, Mr. Trent.
Yes, Mr. Carlson.
Yes.
Ms. Dowling.
Yes.
Ms. Belak.
Yes.
Ms. Franco Harmon.
Yes.
Ms. Hala Kudernikov.
Yes.
Ms. Sabinah.
Yes.
Mr. Todd.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Seven zero.
Yeah, Ms. Carlson, yeah, I'll let you speak, but just, Mr. Trent will be in touch with you via email or telephone call tomorrow to let you know the next steps.
They're just saying in Indian language, jan seva, janar gan seva. That means when you serve people as if you're serving the Lord. So, I truly believe that. You have given me this opportunity. I will take, take it to my heart and work with you and make this district even better than what it is. It's already a great one, but we can reach even higher level. Thank you so much for your trusting me.
Thank you.
All right, moving on. We'll move now to committee representative reports. First up, MTEA reports.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Mike Rizzoli. I'm the MTEA Special Education Chair and teacher at UMS. Unfortunately, Mr. Owen couldn't be here tonight, so I will deliver the MTEA report. First off, I wish they were still here, but Team 1403, oh my goodness, it is incredible to see what our students can do. I mean, the presentation on the screen, what they're doing here, that they continue to do. I think the only thing they could've added was maybe a sales pitch to sell to Board President Todd. Maybe they could've funded for the next couple of years. He seemed really interested in what the price tag may be on that robot. They probably could throw that in next year, so that'd be fantastic. Big shout-out to Tim Light. I mean, the compassion you saw from him getting up here, just from the tears in his eyes shows you how much it means to him as a teacher, as a mentor, with the students, and how he's saying, talking before about he is still in contact with his students. I mean, that's just amazing, you know? So, really a big shout-out to him for all that he has done for the district and that team. I'd like to thank, secondly, everyone who did apply for the board member spot. Thank you for taking your time and having some just incredible speeches and just having such great knowledge. I really appreciate it. Thank you very much. Congratulations to Vanita for securing the spot. We look forward to working with you. As you know, our Music From The Heart presentation, Mary Poppins, held on May 11th, was a huge success. There were teachers, administrators, and plenty of students all supporting our talented staff, to raise money for high school scholarships. In the joint venture with the MTEA and the MHS Instrumental Music Parents Association, share equally in the proceeds. I'm proud to say that we were able to collect $10,000 for that show. All of it, every single penny will go to scholarships. The MTEA will be giving $500 to $1000 scholarships this year. I want to thank the board administration for supporting the endeavor for the past 22 years. Over that time, we have given out close to 170,000 scholarships to students. We value our, we also value our final year loan for our students of OAGS and BTS. On May 29th, we have the book, Hope Will Lead, and what it means to be free. All the students attending will get a copy of the book. So, please check out our social media page, our website, and the PTA newsletter for our registration. Thank you very much.
Mr. Rizzoli. Now move to board member delegate representative reports. Do we have any this team?
I'm gonna share my experience last Saturday at the NJSPA delegate summary. That was the first time that I attended. Joan was there with me. There were 110 voting delegates across all the school districts, and there were 14 resolutions that were discussed and voted on. And basically, these are almost like belief statements or issues that the school districts would like the NJSPA to go to the State House to advocate for. So, it's not, you know, these are, I wouldn't say without teeth, but they are just resolutions and they're going to be pushing on the school districts they have. But I've never attended a meeting like this, and all the resolutions that they have were very interesting. There was one where a school district proposed for the use of the reserve funds for purchase of EV bus vehicles. So, the NJSPA is going to try and see if we can get that as an adjustment or advocacy for school districts. Several other resolutions, and I thought that was interesting. And these resolutions are brought to the NJSPA by school districts as well. So, I don't know if we've ever done that in the past. I thought that whole process was very enlightening. And I think, I don't know, if there's something that we could look through, policy lines, that we can ask the NJSPA to advocate for, out of the State House. But it was, it was, it was good to be there and to participate. That's all.
I am so excited that you have a very similar takeaway from what me and Anya had when we first went in December. It was an eye-opening experience to see, you know, like what process we have excluded ourselves out of. And I really hope and I really like that you energize also to kind of take a closer look, and maybe we can work together and then see like if there are any type of resolutions that we can start putting together and proposing.
And I feel like it's something that we need to discuss, even if it's not something that has right now any impact, because we have to move the state senate and assembly into this.
And be mindful of the process.
But we have to discuss them, so that any, for any future delegate who goes to these meetings has the full understanding of the full board, what they're voting. So, at that moment, I was just voting on also what I thought was best for the district, but I think it'd be better if we had an opportunity to review those resolutions and discuss and decide how we wanna vote as board.
I'd like to...
It was quarterly, monthly?
Twice a year. So, December and May.
So, we usually definitely...
Yeah, in their published. In their published.
So, you can actually get a glance at it to see what's...
Yeah.
You can download the whole PDF version where they have like all the resolutions, you know, the argument for this NJSPA recommendation, whether they recommend or they don't necessarily recommend that, but they don't resolution. So, it's a high-opening experience just to see what other districts are dealing with, how they're looking at issues. And then, you know, some of them, you can look at for that.
So, the 14 resolutions were proposed by districts, like five or six of them, it goes to the Resolutions Committee of the NJSPA, five or six of them were not accepted. And then, but they were still discussed, and one of them was voted on to proceed with the whole process. So, it's like a very interesting, you know, discussion and process altogether. So, ahead.
Any other representative reports, fellow reports?
If I could just quickly interject and say for Amsepta that we did not have a meeting, but Mr. Rizzoli, if you are okay with an invitation to brainstorm, I don't know where you went. There you are. Hi. On how we can connect Amsepta representatives, that would be really helpful, because we really wanna make sure that we... want to make sure that we see that, that communication continue. And so your support would be really helpful. So I'm going to reach out to you. Thanks so much.
On that note, there's the last meeting of the year for ECEPTA is coming up soon.
It is.
The Montgomery Special Education Parent Teacher Association is wondering what ECEPTA is. When is it due?
June 5th.
Yep. Just. And it's Zoom, so super flexible in terms of.
Okay, any other board member delegate representative reports? Hearing none. Board committee reports. ACI.
Good evening. So we met on May 10th, both in person and virtual. I'll be very brief. We had quite an extensive recommendation in terms of texts. And I just need to say that I was so impressed and overwhelmed by the amount of time and effort and process that goes through really vetting the textbook process. One that I would like to highlight, we talked about an LA for Language Arts text that was being introduced, but there is a new science textbook, which is a real deliverable because parents in particular and students were asking for a tangible book. So that's a really nice deliverable that they're going to be able to offer. But again, the process that the, that the teaching staff and administrators go through to really vet these textbooks was quite impressive. The first round of the email phishing campaign results and findings came out. They had a 9% bite rate after the first week of the phishing campaign. So all staff members who did bite received an email with detailed instructions in terms of what they did not do, what error they made. Emails were sent and there will be another attempt before the end of the year. Obviously, the goal is to get that bite rate better. There will be four campaigns as well as training in the next, in the next year. The district also continues the NJSLA testing. It's going very well. VES started at the beginning of the week and UMS started, oh, I'm sorry, you should be done by now. This is sort of retroactive. So last week. All, all other school testings occurred or are occurring within the next couple of weeks. And then lastly, I did follow up on Marty, board member, Marty. On your question about the walkthroughs. And it really, it, it sounds like it's very much not so much to change curriculum, but just to be another set of eyes to make sure that they are being represented in terms of the materials that are being used, the content that's being offered and talked about and taught in each one of the classes to represent the student body in each one of the classrooms. So it's another set of eyes that are really just making sure and understanding what's going on in the classroom.
Can I ask you a little follow up here?
Sure.
9% bite rate. I know today we just had a, had a little talk about ransomware and how devastating that is. 9% seems way too high. I mean, we should get 0.09%. How do we, is there a way to get that down somewhere?
I'm sure, I'm sure that superintendent could speak, but it, it does sound like that's why we're doing this, right? Is to educate and is to train and is to continuously monitor. And so, you know, I, it feels, it feels like they're very much on top of it, but I think this is sort of still a newish initiative. And I think the idea that, you know, we are pressing upon, impressing upon the faculty and staff and supporting it with, with training.
I know we have, we have a company that does backups for us and makes it so that we can recover quickly, relatively quickly. I think you can't actually get back because they implant things in your most previous backups. So I'd sure would like to see that go down from 9%. Way down.
I'd like to also reiterate that it's not necessarily just clickbait. Sometimes these, the phishing schemes are, you know, please go buy $500 gift cards and send them over to MHS because Principal Pino needs them because she's giving, and like that's people. I'm going to go do that.
Yeah.
But hopefully they're not going to get any ransomware.
They're pretty intricate. Like they'll say that they're coming from the HR department and they look like they're very valid with our logo and everything, so.
They're only doing one.
I'm not excusing people.
No.
But they're not as.
This is their full-time job, right? This is what they do. I, I think, I remember that the Los Angeles School District paid $26 million to get their, get their computers back after that.
I'd like to add one more thing. I also have a response to, I believe it was board member Felix's question last time about all of the different surveys that come out that sort of rate our schools and different schools. So the short answer to that is that it's very difficult to compare survey to survey because they're using different metrics and they're using different data. And so of course, we're going to be ranked differently depending on what data they've used. But I can tell you that there's a lot that we do have that supports what our school is doing, particularly online and on our website. And then we've got accessibility to, you know, all different kinds of metrics that have to do with Montgomery. So if you want specifics on that, I can get you that.
And I really appreciate it. And I also appreciate working with Sabina. Also gave me some nice reference materials, which I shared for the department that was interested, so.
Oh, any questions, Gracie?
Thank you so much, Mary and the team and Michelle. The textbooks, I think, are going to make a huge impact, so that's wonderful.
Honestly, I cannot say enough about the process. It was really, really reflective and really well done, really thorough. I'm sorry. Fiona? Yes, actually, no one was not able to be at our meeting, so shout out to Damian Papa. Yes, I know that she's in the.
I was not able to attend ACI this one, and I'm wondering, out of curiosity, sorry, out of curiosity, there's two things on our agenda for acceptance for the Charlotte Danielson and the Marshall Little Valuation. Just out of curiosity, why are we approving the 24, 25s for this year for those like Charlotte Danielson's been the, that's what we've been using?
Right, every year you have to re-approve what evaluation we're using for teachers and for administrators.
Before, when, before summits go out or?
No, for the following year.
This says 20, yeah. Got you, for the following year. Yep. Okay, so it's this year for next year. Yes, got you. Thank you.
Next up, Operations, Facilities, and Finance Committee, OFS.
The Operations, Finance, and Facilities Committee met on May 17th, which is last Friday. Our business administrator has began working with the facilities director, Mike O'Neil, and the supervisor of maintenance and grants, Drew Van Der Zee, on the school property improvement project planned for the summer and the fall. The Pick-Sum summer project will be the replacement of the football field turf. The preparation for this work has already begun and everything is working as scheduled. The maintenance department, in conjunction with the administration, has began to work to renovate the bunker building to create a suitable and welcoming facility for the maintenance employees to host their department meetings and use it as a break room. The current tasks being worked on are connecting the building to the necessary utilities. In the fall, during the teachers convention week, the LMS will come to go a chiller replacement. This is a significant capital improvement project, and the partial funding for this improvement will come from the logic round. Mike O'Neil deserves a recognition for finding the chiller that fits the existing space. If the district had to resize the space needed for that new chiller, the project would cost an additional $200,000. I mean, that's a big savings. So thank you, Mike, for the job well done. The administration is recruiting future positions, one transportation mechanic and the assistant business administrator. There has been very good response to both job postings, and we expect the administration to be able to select suitable candidates from the pool of the candidates that apply. Pick-a-ball is a new sport that is winning America over. There are a lot of residents and students in Montgomery who took interest in playing pick-a-ball. There are pick-a-ball courts behind the UMS that are used frequently by residents after school hours. These courts are due for repair and maintenance. The administration is gathering quotes to assess the cost. The board and the administration will work with the township committee to look for funding options to repair the courts and maintain them properly. Maintaining the courts properly and making them accessible to the residents when the courts are not used by the students will improve the quality of life in Montgomery. It also is aligned with the wellness initiatives put in place by the township. So we hope to develop a plan to share the financial, to share the financial burden of maintaining the courts with the township. No more questions?
Anybody interested in the pick-a-ball game?
You have a people hour?
Moving on, Policy and Communications Committee, PCC.
We did not have a meeting this, this month due to some conflicts, and we're still in the process of reviewing some of the policies, so we'll resolve next month.
Sam, for Human Resource Committee, HRC, we did not meet due to last month's robust agenda, so we will be meeting next month. At this time, entertain a motion to approve the following minutes, April 30th, 2024 executive session meeting, April 30th, 2024 business meeting. They probably moved the second. Any questions on the new issue?
Mr. Trent.
Are we moving, so like are we voting on HIFP six right now? Are we moving?
Prove a minute.
I approve.
Sorry. Mr. Carlson.
Yes.
Ms. Dowling.
Yes.
Ms. Belak.
Yes.
Ms. Franco-Herman.
Yes.
Ms. Hala Kudrina.
Yes.
Ms. Sabina.
Yes.
Mr. Todd.
Yes.
Thank you.
At this time, the board alleges the correspondence to the board. Action Agenda Items Public Comment. The Board of Education welcomes and encourages input from the public. Members of the public are allotted one opportunity to address the board regarding the action agenda items only for up to a maximum of three minutes per speaker. All comments must be directed to the board. Before you make your comment, please state your full name and address and enter both on the Chromebook provided. Being mindful of privacy rights regarding students, board employees, and board members, and to avoid any liability on the part of the speaker, the board discourages defermentory and discourteous remarks. The public comment portions of the meeting are not structured as question and answer sessions, but rather are offered as opportunities for the public to share their thoughts with the board. The board may need to refer an issue to the superintendent if the issue has not been handled through the appropriate chain of command, usually starting at the school level. Responses may be provided at the end of the session. Public comment is open for action agenda items only. Going once, going twice. Public comment for action agenda items is closed. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to accept agenda items 1.0 with an amendment to 1.1, harassment, intimidation, and bullying, HIV report, to remand 263643-MHS04082024 back to the superintendent through agenda item 4.1, which reads as, being resolved that the Montgomery Township Board of Education denies the appeal of HIV incident 264115-UMS04162024. Correction, that last item will be 4.2.
Summer. Second.
It's been properly moved and second to adopt the agenda items. Any questions on the action items? Uh, yes, one is 4.1. It was actually 4.2 is regarding the HIV discussion. So just for the record, that is item number 4.2. Thank you, Mr. Trent. Any other questions?
I believe, I'd like to hear from, and I'm sure the rest of us would as well, attorney Fogarty. Sorry, the policy items that we're voting on today?
So the policies, Maria, that we've requested Stephen to review are not over here, so they're still in review. Yeah.
They'll be on the agenda.
Yeah. These we reviewed previously and we're comfortable with all the changes as far as the suggestion from Strauss last night.
Or as far as all of these that are here, correct?
Yes. So the, the one of equity and equality, those are not here as well as some of the English and second language policy that we discussed. So those two are still in review. So we won't.
Those will be in change.
Yeah, we'll, we'll review those next month.
I've actually issued a written opinion to the board, so it'll be circulated to your partner. You'll probably, you'll probably have it tomorrow.
And can I ask you more too? So we talked about this executive 11C number nine that's being remanded?
Yes, that will be remanded back to superintendent. Any other questions on the act, uh, action agenda items? Mr. Trent, roll call please.
Mr. Carlson.
Abstain on 4.2, everything else, great, yes.
Understood? Ms. Dowling.
Yes.
Ms. Belak.
Yes.
Ms. Franco-Herman.
Yes, abstain on 1.2.
Understood? Ms. Hala Kudrina.
Yes.
Ms. Sabina.
Yes.
Mr. Todd. Yes, thank you. All motions carried.
Thank you.
At this time, new business from the public. The Board of Education welcomes and encourages input from the public. Members of the public are allotted one opportunity to bring any new business to the board for up to a maximum of three minutes per speaker. All comments must be directed to the board. Before you make your comment, please state your full name and address and enter both on the Chromebook provided. Being mindful of privacy rights regarding students, board employees, and board members, and to avoid any potential liability on the speaker. The board discourages defermentory and discourteous remarks. The public comment portions of the meeting are not structured as question and answer sessions. The board may need to refer an issue to the superintendent if the issue has not been handled through the appropriate chain of command, usually starting at the school level. Responses may be provided at the end of the session. Public comment for new business is now open.
Hi, good evening. Once again, I'm asking that the board or at least board members, Franco-Herman and Harris, Harris is not here today, to address the School Ethics Commission opinion dated December 19, 2023, and how it impacts their inability to fully participate on the board. The community deserves to understand how their activities and inappropriate decisions during the last Board of Ed campaign impacted their ability to serve and ultimately impacted the entire Board of Ed. Note that I advised the campaign at the time there was a conflict and by, and my comment was removed and I was blocked from the campaign website. So the School Ethics Commission opinion could have been foreseen, if not altogether, avoided. There seems to be an issue about the opinion not being published online yet, but however, I would like to remind the board that I was present in one of the Board of Ed workshops last summer, and the facilitator trainer, Glenn Thornton, from the New Jersey School Boards Association, addressed public comment sessions and advised that if any board member can respond to a public comment, they can do so at that meeting. Residents are wondering about the vote extensions, committee and office replacements this year, and board member Sabina did promise transparency at the January reorganization meeting. However, I would think that given the ethics opinion and restrictions placed upon them, that the proper thing for the board members, Franco-Herman and Harris, to do would be to resign and to afford the community an opportunity to have fully participating board members who do not have an ethics opinion hanging over them. But by not doing so, they may be doing the community a failure by being effectively neutered and not allowing others to come in and muck up things further. A second issue to do with ethics. Mr. Gettinger brought up a very serious matter at the last board meeting. Last fall, a letter from Mr. Fogarty to Mr. Gettinger was made available to Barbara Preston of the Montgomery News three days before it was received by Mr. Gettinger. Preston reached out for a comment before he even received the letter. Are you investigating this breach on the Board of Ed? Are you investigating this breach on the Board of Ed? Who advised Mr. Fogarty to draft this letter? Who had access to this letter in addition to Mr. Fogarty? How can you today assure the public that this form of breach will not happen again? One would think that the Montgomery News should be more concerned about a board member breaching the public trust by leaking the copy of a private correspondence instead of potentially engaging in election interference. One would think board members not involved in this breach would investigate. A member of the public has said at the last board meeting that she trusts you after myself and others requested an audit of board activities given recent news about a former board member, who, by the way, received her own School Ethics Commission opinion letter, also dated December nineteen. I say trust, but verify. You are elected by the public that wants to trust you, but you must earn trust and always be open to scrutiny.
You have thirty seconds.
Clearly, the community is owed explanation on these breaches of the public trust. Trust of this board is at an all-time low. Silence is perceived as a cover-up. So will we receive responses to my questions this evening, both about the School Ethics Commission opinion and the breach of Mr. Gettinger's letter? Thank you.
Hi, Chris Newman. I have a concern about the fact that happened at the last board meeting when there is an additional videographer, photographer here, not related to the school board, as far as I can tell. The rumor, the common understanding is that the photographer is hired by Jeffrey Grant. To what purpose? I have no idea. Takes videos of the meeting, which is being videotaped. And then, following the meeting, he followed individuals around, myself included, taking our picture and videos of us. As the meeting ended, he was sitting there audibly making racist and insulting remarks about Zelda. And when Barbara Preston asked him his name, he said, "You can call me Daddy." He then continued to take our picture, and he also took the picture of the student board member and a sixteen-year-old student, who then felt harassed and compelled to complain to the police officer. Those young women were escorted into an office by teachers and administrators. I thought, we're not allowed to take pictures of underage students, yet Daddy, or Creepy Daddy, as I'm calling him, had no problem following us around, standing there with his camera, taking our picture, and intimidating these young women and harassing us after the meeting. I don't know what the board's view of this is, if there is some kind of policy about hiring people to come and take pictures of the public and then to take pictures of them when they're being private citizens. It seems to me this is something that needs to be addressed. In addition, we don't know who he is, who would give us his name, Daddy. That's creepy when you're telling a sixteen-year-old to call you Daddy. Finally, the group of people at the end of the meeting convened in the back to local the videos taken by Creepy Daddy, and this building stayed open to allow them to do that? That's our tax dollars? People are so concerned about the money we're spending on sending people to South Africa, but we have to pay a police officer to stand here while they look at a video that this creepy thug took? So I would urge you to make a policy about, we need to know who these people are if they're coming in here and taking our pictures. They need to stop when the meeting stops, and they need to not be taking pictures of underage students who are showing up at the meeting to support the Board of Ed, to see what's happening with their school, and then they're harassed by someone taking their picture to the point where they had to go and contact a police officer and be escorted out. That's wrong. And I would like something to come up with. Thank you.
I have one point. This is Karen Anderson Bellmead. Verify the age. She keeps saying sixteen. Verify the age.
She's sixteen. She's five.
If we're talking about the same person, verify the age.
We're not talking about the same person. Not talking about the same.
Please no comments from the audience. Thank you. Any other public comments?
Hello, this is Marissa Connors, thirty-three, Waco, LA. I just wanted to let the board know that the website for the Board of Education still says seven PM for tonight's meeting. I'm sure that was just a mistake. It seems like the only way that people would have known that the meeting started at six PM was from an email, which unfortunately I had not subscribed to the email last, so I wasn't aware that the meeting started at six PM. So I just ask that in the future, the board be more proactive in updating the website so more people can come and experience the meetings. But I appreciate everything that you're doing, and thank you so much for having us here. Good night.
I think I can go again if everyone else is booked in. Is that right? Just to advise the community on what I've been told. If you feel harassed, this is what the board has advised me. If you feel harassed, there is a police officer right there, and you can go to him. And anyone who feels compelled to file a police report should also write to the board that I would think you not have to have someone else speak for them here. A lot of what I just heard was untrue, and I know that from what I've seen. So I can produce that information for you if you'd like it. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Seeing none, public comments are now closed. Mr. Fogarty and/or Superintendent McLaughlin, anything you'd like to address?
So I can speak to the letter that you were referring to earlier. The board president at the time had asked Mr. Fogarty to draft that letter and send it to Mr. Gettinger. That was done. Then it was brought to my attention that that letter had been released. We did a search of everyone's MTSD accounts, and those who had access did not send it from the emails it was sent to them.
Did you search their personal? Did you have a read?
I don't need to.
Is it this of interest, though, that this happened? I thought we'd do it now because it's important. It's very serious. I would like this to be processed. I would like it to be very serious.
I want to acknowledge that if any correspondence that's confidential is disclosed, that is serious. So I do agree that the characterization is that it's serious, but we can only conduct an internal investigation to determine whether anybody actually disseminated that off of our server. But beyond that, our jurisdiction doesn't extend to allow us to conduct any further investigation. So I do agree that it's serious. We do not know how it happened. And the internal search of our server did not disclose if that letter was transmitted from anybody's email here to the press.
I'll say it again. So, and I'll say it because you mentioned my name and said that I promised transparency, and I do, but I cannot, more than any other board member, be transparent about something that we have been, had, it's more confidential that we are not permitted to speak about, that has not been made public, when and if the SEC decides... So now people are questioning it?
It was bad public...
That was made public by someone. I don't know how that happened. But I, as a board member, we as board members have been instructed that that is confidential. We are not to speak on it. So as far as transparency goes, I will be as transparent as I can be, as will the other members of this board, whenever we can be. But if we can't, we can't. Asking it over and over again isn't going to change that until they make it public.
You have to understand, the board, this board operates under the guidance of the SEC. If we disclose, if we talk about confidential information, we face charges. And no one on this board is going to do that.
There was an issue raised, the last issue that I went on was an issue raised about videotaping or audio-taping in our board meetings. So we do have a policy with regard to that, and the policy reflects the opinion of the courts in our state, which allow anybody to videotape or audiotape a board meeting, provided it does not interfere with the governmental function. And so if someone wants to come in and videotape, they're permitted to do that, provided that it is not done in a way that is intrusive or interferes with our ability to conduct our meetings. Beyond that, if anyone is harassed by a member of the public who's attending our meetings, that has to be addressed through law enforcement.
Mr. Fogarty? Any items for discussion from the board? Hearing none, I entertain a motion for adjournment.
So who?
Do we probably move to second? Any questions on the motion? All those in favor, please, aye. Aye.